Good evening, everyone. Again, thank you for coming. As I always express, I appreciate everyone being involved. And tonight's meeting is expressly for the purpose of sharing the models that for funding the $20 million, our portion of the $20 million beach to, as a part of the matching fund for the 40 million with the state giving us 20 million earlier this year. The last meeting, February 21st, I believe it was, the beach special meeting, I had challenged our council and Mr. Kelly and Hatton to develop several potential models for arriving at the $20 million funding, for council to consider. And my promise to y'all was that we would release these models prior to public, taking public comment and the council discussing at any length. And Mr. Kelly, Mr. Hatton, and the council have risen to the occasion, have several models to present to you this evening. I'm sure there will be comments from council, but we will not publicly discuss them until after we've heard your public comments at the April 12th meeting. And then council will be able to take action. So that's kind of the drill for tonight. Again, my appreciation to Mr. Kelly and Hatton and also the council who supported them in developing these models. And want to say a particular thanks to Councilman Martin and Councilman Kraft for the time and effort that they invested in helping to shape these models and prior to bringing them to you this evening. So with that, I will turn this podium over to Mr. Kelly.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council. Tonight, me and Mr. Hatton over here, we're going to present the options that we have come up with that you were describing. The objective of this meeting is to provide options on ways the town can match the $20 million grant, along with the additional funds required to continue other projected sand projects. As you know, what we've been discussing, we have the Lockwood Folly, Wilmington Harbor, and then we're going to show you the rest of the projects when we get to that page. The timeframe for our discussion, fiscal year '23 through fiscal year '25. For the grant, the town is required to provide detail on how it will spend the funding allocated for the specific purpose as stated in the grant contract. The description should include a timeline, services to be provided, objectives to be achieved, and an annual budget for the grant. And we want to remind everyone, these are working options, and the numbers will continually be involving as individual tax values change, the tax revaluation in '23, '24, the growth percentage of changes, additional rental units become available, rental prices increase, hurricanes, and et cetera. The options presented tonight will shift. And as you know, the budget and tax rates are adopted in June, so no action is being asked for at this time. The percentages that are shown tonight for operational and reserves will change due to the continued fluctuations in collections and needs. There are basically four funds which the town can generate the revenue from to match the grant. Unencumbered general fund balance, the accommodation tax 3%, which we call Fund 45, accommodation tax 2%, which is Fund 46, sand tax, which is Fund 47, and the town has, also has the ability to use a special obligation bond and/or loan. Mr. Hatton?
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Don't go too far. All right. Transfers to Fund 47, as Mr. Kelly said, will come from accommodations tax, the 3% accommodations, which is Fund 45, and then the 2% accommodation, which is Fund 46. We move all that money over to Fund 47 for the sand projects. We've done that for the last few years, and we continue to do that. As Mr. Kelly said, revenues, these numbers can change based on several different things that could happen over the next few years. Again, keeping in mind that all this is in '24, '25. We initially said, well, in unencumbered general fund balance, again, in '20, '25, we'll not exceed 25% going to Fund 47. The same with accommodations tax, 3% and 2%. We're not going to take over at this point 55%. Again, that's our initial, our feeling on it, and again, it could change. And what we are looking at for the upcoming budget and for the next year's budget and a year after that, we plan on transferring out of accommodations at the 3%, 75% initially to that Fund 47 sand fund. And 25% we will leave in that fund for operational expenses that would come up. We don't want to drain that fund every year. And the same with accommodation tax, the 2%, we're going to transfer initially 75%, leave 25 for operational maintenance. And key also, if we don't transfer, say we don't use, say, the 25% for operations, that will continue to stay in those two funds and just continue in their fund balance. And if it's needed somewhere down the line, it will be there and be available. So it's not, you know, don't lose it if you don't use it, don't lose it type deal. In the sand tax, at this point, we have $3,878,000 in the beginning fund balance. So that will be money that we will carry, hope, and we'll build on that and start using in '24, '25. And we're going to have, before council, there'll be a special obligation, a special capital project ordinance for the $20 million. We will lay out expenses and how it will be spent, as Mr. Kelly said. And then in '23, '24, we're going to have a county revale. And with that, we, based on history and looking at some of the numbers, we think that number will, of the values, will go up 20% to possibly 30%. But we don't know at this point, and we won't know till probably January of next year. So on our assumptions, on the value of the real property on the beach, we are saying 2%. Again, we do not want to give a too large of a number, and we're going to hope that that number is really accurate. And we just didn't want to base everything on a higher number, and it not happened. So we came up with the 2%, and that's how we came up with that. One more slide. Also, in our models, we have these expenditures that we know will happen. We don't know, obviously, the amount of money each year. But like on the first one, there are pro forma expenditures. We put $250,000 in there. Pro forma expenditures is an assumption. We don't know what those numbers will be three years out. So we have to make an assumption, and that's what the pro forma is. '24, '25, you see the beach nourishment project. And at the same year, we're going to get again the harbor project from Wilmington Harbor. And the last time, it was $3 million for that sand. So those will hit then. The ICW Ben Widener, $750,000 in '23, '24. That's something that we know based on last time's cost. That's why we've got the 750 in there. Moffett nickel engineering, you can see the numbers. Some of that, 1.7, may go over '23, '24, but we're hoping not. And then the annual beach monitoring, which Johnny Martin say, you know, approximately $100,000 a year. And then finally, the Lockwood Folly and Shore dredging. That's a known number that we share with Brunswick County and Holden Beach for the Lockwood Folly and inlet. And that's how we've come up with the numbers for expenses.
Thank you.
So what we try to do is lay out on where we are going and how we're trying to get there and show you. But as Mr. Hatton was saying, the revenues are collected, and these numbers can be reduced. And our objective is to reduce the need for additional funding from general fund. So as you're building up funds '45 and '46 and '47, you'll be taking away some of the responsibility off the general fund. And it's our goal to make Fund 47 self-sufficient going forward and to allow the fund to grow and pay for hurricanes, projects, and maintenance. Being self-sufficient is not a goal that we know that can get done this year, or next year, or the year after that, but we're looking to take that into the future to try to establish So then we get down to some options. And basically, it's everything that we just got through going on the previous slides, but now you're starting to see dollars involved. The transfers that you see fiscal year '24, '25, those are the amount of monies that will be taken from the accounts that Mr. Hatton just discussed. You see the general fund transfer in '24, '25, $3.8 million will be transferred to help pay for the nourishment project plus the other capital projects as we defined. And you can see, at the end of the day, we would be $133,039 short. And people say, well, why'd you show something that's short? When we looked at the 2% growth, you look at the other people, and they're saying 3, 3.5, 4, 4.5, and you're looking at other numbers that they're providing, we were very conservative, as we usually are. If anything comes in over that, then these numbers start to fluctuate. Then you would take less from the general fund to still be able to balance your budget at the end of the day. Going forward, we know that the revale is coming in '23, '24. We don't know what the outcome of that, but we know what the percentage was last time is around 28% increase. So if you start looking at those numbers, you can carry that through to see what a penny is worth at a later time. And then you can adjust that, but we don't know what council will do at that time either. So we're taking the assumptions going forward at the minimum as we can to still be able to balance the budget. So as Mr. Hatton described, the undercovered general fund, you see what that is and the assumptions. The estimated amounts, 75%. The 25, we tried to explain everything that we had done on the verbiage part to show you on the spreadsheet as well, so you can see where these monies are coming from. The beginning fund balance in '47 was the number that Hatton showed you. The sand project costs, those are the totals of the projects that was provided. So you go through all that, and you start looking, and we came up with three different options for council to take a look at. The benefits, no increase to the sand tax rate, no bond or borrowing required, beach nourishment and ongoing projects were included, growth projections could gain resulting in decreasing the general fund transfer amount. Decision on general fund transfer, and all these numbers don't take effect until '24, '25. So you have time to see what's going to happen to these accounts. There is some risk. The growth projections and/or Brunswick County reevaluation projects could be less than anticipated. I believe we're on the low side, so I think we'll be there, okay there, but it is a risk that could be involved. And then if that did happen, potential increase for the general fund transfer. With this option, no sand tax rate increase, and then make sure everybody's aware, revale in '23, '24. Option two. And what we try to do is give council and the public different scenarios of what we had. We had people talking about we could look at using bonds, we could borrow money, less general fund transfer, more general fund transfer. And all these numbers, as I said, are, they're working numbers, and if you changed it from 55% to 60%, then everything moves. So these are moving target numbers that we have, but we looked at the minimums to make sure that we could balance. So we tried to keep everything constant, and then we just changed a variable. So on this one, we didn't do any transfer from general fund. So what you see at the end, you see $3,995,000 shortfall. So one way to do that is to go after a bond or a loan. So we show what the bond would be, we show what the monthly payments would be, I mean, not monthly, but the annual payments would be, and then a percent of increase that it would be to be able to make that payment. But on this one, there is no general fund transfer. But you're using the same sand tax, no increase to sand tax rate, no impact to general fund balance, beach nourishment, and ongoing projects are still included. And it's the same kind of things. Growth projections could gain, resulting in bond and/or borrowing amount decreased. So now the general fund was what we talked about before. Now we're talking about the bonds or borrowing power could be reduced if we have the growth that anticipated. And then decision on the bond or borrowing accounts occurs in '24, '25, so we have additional time to be looking to see what each funds are doing as the town continues to grow. Growth projections and our Brunswick County revaluation projections, less than anticipated, bond and borrowing amount could increase, increased interest rates, which would increase amount of bond and/or borrowing. So there are some risk factors with this. Impact on the taxpayers, no sand tax rate increase, and then again, we have the revaluation coming in '23, '24. Option number three. People said, well, what would it look like if we increased it a penny? So we started looking at going forward, just to see what one penny would do in the first year. You still see the transfer from fund balance, general fund. We still showed the same constant because we wanted to see what this would do for us on the end result. And so you see there was a gain of $904,156. So now you could reduce the general fund amount, you could reduce the transfers, or you can start to build a fund balance in these accounts for future projects. So that gives council some options to see how they want to go and how they want to proceed. But it's the same scenarios as you see down below. But we did a tax increase in '22, '23, and then we still did the same percentage of growth for '23, '24, and '24, '25, as we did on the other options, one and option two. No bond or borrowing is required with this one. Beach nourishment and ongoing projects are included. Growth projections could gain, just like before, and decrease general fund transfer, or you could reduce the transfers in the other accommodations fund. So that's something to look at. Then the decisions don't need to be made until '24, '25 on your transfer amounts that you're wanting to do. Risk, the growth projections, again, just like option number one, is the same kind of risk that are involved with this option. Then the taxpayers' impact for this one, there is an increase on sand tax rate in '22, '23. And then you have the Brunswick County revale coming in '23, '24. So those are the three options. We looked at a flat, we looked at flat with general fund transfer, excuse me, and then we looked at a flat with a bond, and then we looked at a one cent increase. Now you can see what the three factors were. One of them was $133,000. One of them is you'll need to borrow money. And then the other one gives you an increase for your fund balances or a reduction in transfers from general fund. So that's what we have in front of you for discussion. And as a reminder, there is no conclusion or anything tonight for this. As you know, you set the taxes and everything in June, so all this will be going on at that time. These line items will change. In accommodations fund, you'll be able to see what we're spending the money on during the budgetary process. Sand tax, you'll see what projects and everything are included in that. So these sheets won't transfer through the budget process because it goes back to the line items and the budgets themselves. But this basically gives you an overview.
These are the number, the numbers you used are from end of February?
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from council? Go ahead.
I'm happy to start us off. Seems to be my role. I begin with my personal analysis with several core assumptions. The first is that there were numerous models, none of them were perfect. We entered into that process understanding that. They all involve a trade-off or a cost, hidden or otherwise. The other assumption that I make is that we're at a watershed moment. Our beach is vulnerable. We've had a long history of piecemeal efforts to restore the beach, largely driven by FEMA with a match from us. Now we have a watershed moment, a historic moment, where we have 50% discount on the dollar. We have our economy, our way of life, our culture, our environment all at stake. We need to make the commitment, and that's what we need to do. We need to commit to the other half of the arrangement with the state. That, for me, is a given. Whether you like model one or two, three is a nonstarter for me, so I'm down to two models. I would make this point, that when you pick one of these models, or we could call it an approach, or we could call it a strategy, call it what you want, you are essentially managing multiple contingencies over time. So we're really not going to know where the, it lands until the third year, just so we're all clear. These numbers are going to fluctuate next month, they're going to continue to fluctuate, they're going to change. That's part of it. Couple things that are true, though. The amount of transfer from general fund equals the degree of risk. Just understand that. We're transferring money, there's a risk. And we've seen what the risk looks like, EISAS, for example, four to $6 million worth of infrastructure damage. So there is a risk. Borrowing also has its risks, because, as you know, the Federal Reserve has raised the prime rate, is talking about a half a basis increase on top of that, and is continuing to fight a hyperinflated economy. There's no easy way to borrow, right? Right. There's no such thing as a neutral position here, because taxes are already taken from you and put into the general fund, and we're assuming that additional tax revenue will be available in the reeval. So as we think about it, there's no perfect way. The growth estimates, I concur, are really at the low end, and I think the hope here is that certainly for next year, the rate will be higher than 2% based on what we know. But beyond that, there's uncertainty. So where do we go? I would support model one with this proviso, that I think ultimately, from a public policy point of view and from a fiduciary perspective, municipalities typically bond, borrow money, they don't transfer $4 million out of their general fund in the third year. So these, both one and two as models, are backend loaded. Now, you could argue that gives you more flexibility. I would argue it gives you more risk, and I would prefer to bond it versus transfer it out of general fund. But with that proviso, I will support option one, and I want to acknowledge the work that Councilman Martin and Kraft did on this, and they ran and crunched a lot of these numbers in conjunction with Mr. Kelly. So I'm going to throw it over to Mr. Martin. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. Bach. As he said, Councilmember Kraft and myself started out building models, and quickly, when we reached a consensus that we thought was palatable for the other council members, we started meeting with Mr. Hatton and Mr. Kelly and massaging those numbers. That's where we came up with a conservative model. And yes, we are looking at three years down the road, potentially transferring money from the general fund. We made sure we remained within our policy, our fiscal policy, and we didn't forego the threshold value that we have established for a fund balance in our general fund. As Mr. Hatton said, he's confident that he could support option one and sleep at night. So that makes me feel good. If Mr. Hatton can sleep at night, then we can all sleep at night, right? We know that we're not putting the town in any financial risk with option one. Furthermore, I want to make sure everyone understands that we are not draining the coffers with this option. We worked very hard, we sharpened our pencil, we rolled up our sleeves, and we looked at every possible way to make sure we were not emptying out any fund account from anywhere off of our ledger. That's important, because this is backend loaded, as Councilmember Bach pointed out. That means we've got to survive the next three years with a conservative prediction on tourism growth, a conservative projection on what the county reevaluation may impact us with. But furthermore, we can hope for another season like we had last year, where we did not have a major storm come through and require us to upfront some money to repair damages. Even if we get FEMA reimbursement, it is a reimbursement. Mr. Kelly consistently reminded myself that FEMA money is reimbursed to us, we still have to front the money to get started. So we tried to put together a plan to lower the risk. Councilmember Bach and I spoke several times about a risk assessment. A traditional risk assessment in a financial model such as this would look at the value of the asset, and then you would compare that to your exposure, and your exposure is always measured as a percent of the value of the asset. Unfortunately, spending $47 million for sand doesn't really represent an asset, per se, that you could just force into a financial risk model. However, we still could tabulate as a percentage any exposure that we may have. So option one, to Mr. Kelly and Mr. Hatton's point, while we're showing a $133,000 deficit in the terms of a three-year period in time, that's really $0. I just want to make sure everyone understands that. So option one would represent a low-risk assessment model going forward. Now, on the flip side of that, option three, which was going to generate a surplus by increasing the sand tax by a penny, just doesn't make sense in today's age and time. As Councilmember Bell and Bach were chatting on the side over there, we're at a current point in time where we're experiencing high inflation, well, high everything. I don't know about you, but the last time I went to the grocery store, my $100 brings home fewer and fewer bags of groceries. So we're trying to be conscious of where we are today. We're trying to project where we're going to be in three years, and we're trying to look at a lower risk model going forward. So with that said, I am very happy that Councilmember Bach supports option number one. I think that's the most favorable option at this point in time. There have been conversations with other council members over this. We haven't been doing this by the seat of our pants or just throwing these numbers together five minutes before the meeting. There's been a lot of work that went into this. A lot of council members had input on this and have shared their views and their direction. So I want to thank everyone sitting up here today on all of the effort they put into this to get us to this point. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kraft?
Yes. We were given the job to come up with a tough answer. How do we find $20 million to keep our beaches strong? How do we do that without hurting our neighbors and our taxpayers? We've come up with some solutions. Easiest is not always the best. The easy solution is, let's get a bond. The other easy solution is, let's just tax the taxpayers. I don't see that much of a risk in taking 25% from the reserves. We have $16 million in the reserves. If we take 25% of that, in 2022 numbers, if we take 25% of that, we have $12 million still in the reserves. So I don't see that much of a risk to take 25% from the general reserve. My entire objective was no tax or assessment until we try every avenue, turn over every stone before we throw up our hands and say, we have to tax the people, we have to get a bond, turn over every stone. We turned over every stone. We came up with $4 million from the reserve, we came up with money from the sand tax, we came up with accommodation tax, we came up with conservative numbers. We came up with $20 million without taxing. I'm very proud of that. The growth increase assumptions are at 2%. I love Mr. Hatton to death. He's the most conservative man I've ever met. I'm quite sure, 300 new building permits last year alone. That's a lot of new houses, that's a lot of new income, that's a lot of revenue. Accommodations tax, a lot of people haven't thought about all these rental properties. Yes, we get accommodations tax. Most of these accommodation taxes are on $7,000, $8,000 a week rentals. Those rentals are going up. They're going up to $10,000, $12,000. There's a lot of different money in a lot of different places. We're growing. There's a lot of growth. In my opinion, model number one is a no-brainer. We have found the $20 million. We can go forward. I've said all along, no taxes, no assessments, unless we have to, we don't have to. Thank you.
Councilman Bell?
I'm glad Mr. Hatton is conservative, but I agree with Bill. I think- I think that that 2% is a little low. I do agree that option one, and the more that I've looked at these, I think that option one and option two are going to end up combining, and our deficit is going to be a lot less at the end of the three years. So I don't think we're going to have to bond, I hope.
I hope you're right. Mr. Blaylock?
Well, I will be totally honest with you, I depended on my colleagues to help me through this, because this is not my bailiwick, if you will. I do appreciate all the work that Mr. Hatton and Mr. Kelly did, and Mr. Kraft especially, and Mr. Martin. Looking at it from a old country boy's point of view, I think option number one makes more sense to me, and it seems to be, since this is a living document, as I refer to it, it's going to be a constant change as time goes on. But I think the game plan of option one is the best way to go, as far as being conservative, if you will. There's a lot of, you have the big H out there that could come along and scramble all this up in a hurry, and let's pray to God that doesn't happen. But again, I, after looking over them and listening to my colleagues, I support option number one.
He understood a lot more of it than he's letting on.
Well, I just want to close with, I love a tough challenge, and I'm proud of our administration and council and all the work they've invested in this. There are a lot of behind-the-scenes hours, a lot of conversations between council members sitting in Mr. Kelly's office, talking about possibilities, talking about how the model should be framed so that it makes the most sense to the public, and I couldn't be more proud that they have risen to the occasion and were able to do so with still leaving a couple of weeks for you to study the models that have been put out there. On April 12th, we'll have a public hearing, so we want to hear your comments and what you think about the models. I do want to reiterate that we narrowed this problem, so we started pretty broadly and started to consider models that would provide maintenance funds, you know, well into our future. And everyone kind of took a giant step back and said, let's focus on solving this problem. Let's focus on funding the $20 million. And we firmly believe then that will position us such that we then can address the future maintenance funding that we'll need for ongoing management of the beach to keep it in the best possible shape that we can, because our beach protects our island. It protects our town, and it's very, it's very important to us. So I believe we have a consensus tonight from all of the council members. Thank you for working towards that. However, there are some major things that can happen between now and FY '24, '25. We don't know what nature will, how she will challenge us in the next couple of hurricane seasons, nor do we know we'll have changes in council makeup after FY '23 election. So will those individuals be willing to support the consensus that council will, is leaning towards tonight, and then hopefully will take action on after hearing public comments on April 12th? And we hope that that basically puts a flag in the sand that our new council members or re-elected council members will continue to honor. Again, I just want to extend my thank you to everyone, and...
Madam Mayor, if I may make one last comment.
Please.
Since we have a consensus of the council for option one, given the deadline is next month to respond to the state in a formal application for the match, would it be appropriate, not necessarily in a motion, but to at least direct staff to begin work on the state's response based on option one? I would hate to put undue pressure and stress on them if we don't make a motion until April. That doesn't give them a lot of time to properly prepare the state's response. So if we could direct them to begin work on that, I think that would be better for them, and I don't want to speak on their behalf, but I'm sure Mr. Hatton, he's kind of nodding over there, I think he would like a little, a couple of nights' sleep by getting a head start on the response to the state.
Before we do that, council, under our Lisa, permissible under guidelines for this meeting?
I would prefer, since it's not, the agenda doesn't list this as an action item, polling the council, and if that's the consensus of council, you can direct staff, but I'd prefer it not to be a motion.
Yeah, it's clearly the consensus of council. Okay, so that works.
How about this, does anyone object to that direction? I think staff understands the council's direction.
We understand that, and that helps us going forward on that. And always, option one, option two, option three, as the town and us, council has done before, we're always looking at the grants, different kind of funding options. So all these numbers can change. Every time we get ready to do a project, we start applying for the same grants that we've received before, and we were denied a few last times, so now the next time, hopefully we're going to get the grants. So there's other funds that we'll be continually going after. So all these numbers will change as we go forward if we do get grants or other funding options, and we'll continue to ask legislation for additional funds as well. So these are, as you've said, moving numbers all the time, but we just need to have a concept and a principle going forward so we can sort of provide to the state how we're going to lay it out. It's not dollar numbers, it's not things like that. We just show them the accounts and funds, how we believe we're going to be able to get the monies, and we'll be able to go from there.
Could I ask, are there intervals at which we could revisit these numbers, say, post, say, in October, for instance, after first quarter, and we know what the season has delivered in terms of increase in taxes? Does it make sense to at least continue to affirm that the option number one continues to be viable?
Well, during the workshops, you'll see that number, and then after that, you'll see the quarterly reports come from Mr. Hatton. So you'll see what's in Fund 45, 46, 47 going forward. So you'll be able to track it as we go through, and then January, when we go to the treats, you can start looking at it and see where we're at on these, to see what percentages we're at, and then closer to the budget, then you'll be looking at the numbers again. But in this format, we can put the numbers back in it, but I believe you'll be able to see on the quarterly reports, you'll be able to see where we are at that moment for the revenues that we've collected.
Can I ask, given how much, you know, not to minimize risk, there is a scenario, all right? I'll call it a Reagan-esque scenario, and we're at a very low projection for growth. We could outgrow this problem, as Mr. Kraft said. On the other hand, the economy is, you know, crash post-pandemic, rebounded, we have no idea. So I think we should be tracking it, and if you could highlight the delta, the changes in those accounts that are integral to option one, that would be very helpful, because we should be looking at that. And let's all hope that nature is benign and that our growth is way more than 2%.
Right.
Right? Because that's the baseline, but that's an assumption.
Any other comments?
We would just like to thank y'all for all your assistance in getting this done.
And thank you for your efforts. This is, I couldn't be more pleased to see the models that we have to consider, and I appreciate the council's work and their consensus this evening. I would hope that the public would perceive that as good news. We're not going to take questions tonight. I apologize, but there is no public discussion tonight. I would write that question down, and you can be first in line on April 12th, and we'll answer everyone's questions before council takes action.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session to consult with town attorney to preserve the attorney-client privilege and to discuss specific personnel pursuant to NCGS.
Second.
One, I'm not done yet, Bach.
She's faster.
NCGS 143, 318, 11A, 3 and 6.
All in favor?
Well, I'll second it, and we can be in favor.
There you go, thank you.
Whatever she says.
Unanimous. We'll call the meeting back to order, coming back from closed session. Any other matters to discuss? Is there a motion to adjourn?
No action was taken.
No action was taken, correct.
Motion to adjourn. Madam Mayor?
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you very much. Counsel?